Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda. We do have one addition, 7K. Approved resolution 2025-33, ordering the improvement for the 2025 reclamation project. And we also have the public hearing for the 2025 street reclamation project. One change is before we get into the public hearing, I ask the council to let us have Janelle Kendall do her report before that, if that's fine with the council.
Nope, sure.
Okay. Staff have any changes besides that, council? Call a question or ask for a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Scott. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes, we have the April 2nd, 2025 regular meeting and the April 7th, 2025 special meeting. We can probably handle both of them at the same time unless there's something someone wants to bring up, otherwise is there any changes or clarification needed within those two sets of minutes? Okay, we will do the, do them separate due to a couple of members not being here at the April 7th meeting. Any changes on the April 2nd one? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Now the April 7th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, three in favor, none against, two abstentions. This now brings us to our public open forum, this is separate from the public hearing, but just to let you know, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call the question the third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Okay, our public open forum is now closed. Like we said, we were going to let county attorney Janelle Kendall come up and do her report.
Good evening, Janelle Kendall, the county attorney and also your city attorney by contract, here to make my annual report. We'll start as I always do on the front with the people that weren't prosecuted who are truly first-time offenders. I can tell you those numbers are generally going down. Some of the juveniles that we used to divert, they don't even write tickets for some of those things anymore, some of the possession of tobacco, the really low-level things, the schools are doing a good job of dealing with them, so some of those don't even come through the court system. And adults are truly first-time offenders and we actually have less truly first-time offenders in modern times, it's more the same people that we've seen a number of times before and don't qualify. So you did have two adults and four juveniles from your jurisdiction this year that went through the program. Again, if you have this, the community service projects, it's good for the kids from Albany to maybe come up here and your kids to go over to Belgrade or something so everybody doesn't have to participate in their community service. But we have still some of those projects, in fact, we've probably got more projects now than we've got kids and adults in diversion to do them. So part of what we're going to do with the staff that used to be completely full-time employed with this is put her over on the truancy cases. Truancy cases continue to be very high. They started out that way before COVID, COVID didn't help, and now here we are. But we are seeing again some success in applying the same type of idea that we did with this with the truancy cases. So we're going to be moving that resource over there going ahead and we'll report back year to year on what it is that we get on your diversion cases. When you go then to the blue and red, those are your misdemeanors. We had six, seven new police chiefs this last year, obviously one of them was yours, and we saw changes to some extent in every one of those. It's not unusual to see a change when a new person becomes in charge, your numbers are up a little bit as you can see there, but they're good stops, they're good tickets, they're good charges, we see absolutely no issue with that. And the price of your contract is the same regardless of how many they write, so you don't have to worry about that, that's just how we do it. But you can see that your numbers are up a little bit, actually across the county, they were generally down a little bit except in the cities where we had new police chiefs and we had quite a few this year, so you could actually see that happen in real time. And then going to that last page with all the colors on it, those green ones are your felonies. And we did have quite a few prison commits come out of Sock Center last year, quite a few people with substantial criminal histories that were again caught for something else. We had a couple of pretty good-sized thefts, one was an employee theft, those cases are harder to investigate, but we saw really good work out of your guys. There's eight assault cases there, a felony DWI, which means your fourth DWI in 10 years, that takes some effort. At that point, we're not angry with you, we're afraid of you because you've continued to drink and drive despite the fact that you've been in and out of court for it at least three times before in the last 10 years, so that's a pretty serious offense. Six drugs, and you did have a VODAF up here, I've noticed as I'm going around to the cities this year, year the 13th night, that we had VODAF up here in Sock Center, we just had Big One in Melrose, they're out in Belgrade, they're in Greenwald, we had a group of folks that we've been working on for a long time and that whole thing happened, a bunch of them went federal. So those are very big cases and the sheriff wanted me to let you know, they're glad to be able to get those resources out here. Commonly over the years, that would be a complaint that you've got these task forces, but we don't see them out in the smaller towns, you know, they were out there, they were out there and they were good cases. So we're looking, overall, crime is down across the county, across the state, across the country, it'd be good to think that it could stay that way, we'll see about that. Part of that is that some of the drug laws changes and some of these drug cases are not felonies anymore. So when you're seeing drug cases, these aren't small-time cases anymore, the laws have changed such that we're putting our efforts into those bigger dealer cases and those are getting appropriate treatment. Questions?
Questions? Comments? Thank you.
All right, I know you have a lot on your agenda, good to see you, don't have to wait until I come back here every year. If there are questions that you have in the meantime, and I offer it to Chief Jensen, we do have consistent data and statistics that we can run pretty quickly, so when it comes up to budget time, when you have questions about, you know, what exactly is going on under the contract, but also just what the crime trends are in your community, we have them going back a long way. So we can get that information to you, just please let us know, you don't have to wait till I come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move back to the agenda item of public hearing, we will recess the regular meeting and we will enter into our public hearing. We have one public hearing before us this evening in accordance with the official mail and public notice in the matter of proposed improvement, reclamation project of Park Lane, Parkview Drive, and 600 feet of Hendrick Street. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, if you wish to speak, please sign in on the sign-up sheet at the back of the room. The procedure is as follows, first will be presentation by staff followed by questions of staff, then public input, raise your hand, when recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, state your comments and position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we will hear questions for clarification, then second, public in favor of the proposal, then third, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless the majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session. Vicki?
Okay, so the city council on its March 19th regular meeting called for a public hearing to be held tonight to consider the proposed improvement of Park Lane, Parkview Drive, and a part of Hendrick Street by full depth reclamation. This is about 2,585 lineal feet at varying widths of 32 to 34 feet plus 7,300 square-foot cul-de-sac, so it's about a half a mile and then the cul-de-sac. Notices were sent to all property owners based on a preliminary estimate of the cost of the project. Included in the preliminary notice was an estimate of their potential assessment, and you have that sheet in front of you, Hannah, to see what was, what was to be assessed to them. The estimated cost of the project based on the epitomists to be removed and the tonnage to be installed is $175,000. The project will be paid for with 2025 budgeted funds, there'll be no borrowing or bonding necessary. The property owners are assessed 35% of the cost based on his or her frontage with consideration for double frontage and corner lots. So where there's some credits that were added, if they might have paid for Hickman, they might have a credit on this, or they might have got the credit on Hickman and then they're going to pay, so it base, it's, each lot is a little bit different. If the council pursues with the improvement, the bids will be considered at subsequent meeting, we do have the bids advertised right now, they are not open yet, we plan to open them on May 1st. And then finally, after the project, if adopted, there'll be a final assessment after it's completed and the final numbers are available. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Concerns? You do have the assessment sheet in front of you, I take it, and you have three maps of the areas that we propose to do the reclamation on. There's no questions, then we will open this up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on this item? You need clarification, want to speak in favor or against, you can come up and do it now. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor or against or needs clarification? Call a third time, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor or against or needs clarification on the proposal? Council, have any last-minute questions?
Just a question quick for Vicki, we, the assessment portion or 35% is pretty consistent with what we do on most projects, correct?
Yes, that is correct, that is our policy.
Okay.
Did we have anybody send comments in or?
I've had people call me and ask how it was calculated, but no comments for or against.
Okay.
No, no letters or anything for or against.
Sometimes we get people to call in or send letters in to have it read into the record.
I've had informal comments that, let's get this done.
Okay. Okay, well, we don't have anyone in the public that wants to speak, we don't have any other questions or concerns from the council, so we will close our public hearing and we will now reconvene our regular council meeting. Next item up, Police Department Monthly Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Monthly report, I got the March numbers in there as you can see, 914, which is up, but that's kind of the trend, starts to warm up and we start getting a little bit busier. Some of the higher numbers than usual, six driving while intoxicated or impaired, so that's both alcohol impaired and drug impaired. 16 juvenile problems, which is pretty typical when it starts warming up like that, we're going to see, that's going to jump up in this month and next month throughout the summer. We respond to 33 medicals, I'll see 12 ordinance violations, a few of those were some, I think all of those were junk vehicle ordinances where we were warning them all winter about getting either junk picked up or tabs on vehicles, and then some of them got tickets. So that's what those were. 17 suspicious incident calls where they were called in, 435 traffic stops, 14 welfare checks, I'll see warrants as 10, I don't think there's 10 warranted checks, I think it was 10 warrant attempts. Of those, how many got actually arrested, I don't know, I couldn't figure that out when I was looking at it, but we, when it goes in the computer like that, when we check out a residence for a warrant check, it generates a case number for it now, something's a little bit different, but I know we did bring a couple to jail for this local warrants. As Janelle Kendall said earlier last week, you might have heard some scuttle of some search warrants that happened in town, that did happen, we did have a search warrant executed in the north end of town, we worked with the Central Minnesota Violent Defenders Task Force, assisted them both locally, and then a member of our department who's on the SWAT team also helped with some SWAT executions in the Melrose area. Last week I did attend the Minnesota Chiefs Conference that was held down in Rochester, so I was down there for a few days, that went real good, I did get a grant this, this year, so my lodging and my fees for that conference were taken care of, so that worked out pretty good. We're still wrapping up some of our trainings for our yearly trainings, we did, got our use of force trainings done today, once that range in Melrose dries out, we'll do our firearms here in the next month or so depending on the weather. Then one last thing, has the lock project, you see there's been a lot of action around City Hall, talked to those guys today, they're making good headway, I'm thinking maybe end of next, we might be live with all the doors done, maybe, we'll see, they're hitting a couple snags, nothing crazy. Questions on, any my?
Questions?
Are we doing a cooperative with the state right now on I-94, doing any patrolling?
Um, yeah, so some of that through the TZD cooperative, Tor Zero Death, right now there's a distracted driving wave, and then upcoming in May, I think there's a seatbelt and speed through the summer, the DWI, so there's some, there's some of that that's still going on too.
All right, thanks.
With your juvenile problems, those 16, you seen that, what type of activity is it that, you know, rises to the level that we report that as a juvenile problem?
Some of it is issues if they're causing, seeing up the school, some of it has to do with maybe if they're out of control at home and their parents calling, or if they're out goofing off in the street and someone calls in, and, you know, on their bikes or doing light vandalism or something, that can be considered juvenile problem too. So anytime basically we have contact on the street with juveniles, not, maybe not necessarily criminal, but maybe pushing it, goofing around a little bit, those go down as juvenile problems.
Okay, thank you.
Curfew violations?
Curfew, yeah, curfew, we haven't run into that yet, that's more of, we'll start hitting that at the end when school gets out, the curfew, if we do end up with a curfew, we'd end up being either an ordinance if we write a ticket, or if we just warn them that pie going, those are juvenile, juvenile problem also. We're going to take it this summer, we've already had a conversation with the curfew stuff this year, we find kids after curfew and it's, it's been an issue, we're going to bring them to the police department, their parents can come pick them up at the police department, we're not going to fart around with this here, we're going to nip it in the butt right away if they're out causing heck after 10 or 11.
Okay. Any other questions? Concerns? Okay, thank you, Joe. Public Works Monthly Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this past month, the arena had three dry floor events, those went well, we had a snow event at the end of March that took place, required most of the week to clean up from that. Our larger potholes in town have been filled with our cold-mix asphalt, so we're waiting for the hot-mix plants to open up mid-May, and then we'll start to put the tar on the roads that have smaller holes that require that type of mixture. Sign repairs have been completed on Ash and Sinclair, we were waiting for the frost to go out of the ground, we did place a new order for some other signs that need to be replaced around town, and then also included those children at play signs that are coming for south of the library there, so we'll get those up as soon as they're in. Street sweeper has been running steady for the past week and a half, we did an initial pass, so we've made it across about 90% of town now on the first pass, and we'll be continuing to run that until the end of the month here and get everything cleaned up. Grading gravel roads and parking lots, the sweeper on the tractor has been out to sweep the grass areas along the gravel roads, that's to remove any of the debris that have, may have gotten plowed there inadvertently over the winter, so that is all done now. Park stuff is starting to fire up now that the weather's turning around, we do have all the bathrooms open up and the water turned on and they're available for use in all the parks, we do have the dog park and the community garden are also ready for use, and then we did meet with someone from the community garden about some projects that they asked for some help with, so we'll be working with them to accomplish some of those tasks for them when they're ready this spring. Campground, we did a bunch of tree removal and pad preparation for the camper cabins which are going to be placed, we're going to be pouring the foundation and bringing in one cabin by the end of the month, there will be some work to be completed when it arrives and our crew will be doing that construction work once it gets there. Water is going to be turned on in the campground next week, we just need it to be a little bit warmer before we turn on all those hydrants, and then the final prep work on all the sites will be completed prior to opening on May 1st. We're working with the baseball association right now as well, we're doing some site grading up at the arena ball fields to install some batting cages that they purchased, so once we have a better plan for that, we'll let you guys know what we got going up there, we got to get some dirt work done and some prices on that, so that's what we're working on now. And lastly, the brush pile today, just so everyone's clear, we did not light that, this is not a good day to burn, somebody put ash in our pile, and with the wind it decided to light everything up, so fire department's there now spraying it out, but it's going to be smoky and there was lots of reasons not to have that on fire, so just wanted to be clear that that wasn't our intentions for today.
Okay, is there anything going on at the airport right now? You got to move the AWAS yet?
Yeah, so the AWAS project, we're waiting for the surveyor to survey that for us, and then he's going to get us the foundation plans, once they have that done, then we will be out there to do the digging, get the concrete poured, then MINDOT will come in and move the AWAS system. I talked to Stern's Electric today, we're on their game plan for May, I said I'd give them a week's notice once we were ready to move that AWAS system, so then they'll be, they'll be right there with us to get the new power plowed into the, to the airport and out to that AWAS system, so we're on track there.
Okay. Any other questions? Concerns? Okay, thank you, Ben. Planning Commission, Sarah.
Good evening. In your packet you have the planning commission report, we had a meeting on April 8th, we had one public hearing for a short-term rental, they needed an interim use permit to have that, and that is contingent on the successful, successfully obtaining a lodging license from Sterns County. March, we had 13 permits with a construction value of $633,000. A year ago in March, we had seven permits with a construction value of $205,000. So far, we've issued like four zoning permits, and now that spring is really here, people are, you know, calling, stopping in, asking questions to work on projects, so it's getting busier now with the nice weather.
Okay, just to let you know, none of us received any of that information in our packet.
It wasn't in the packet.
Huh?
It wasn't in the packet.
Oh. So, um, other question is nuisance, the report that we need?
We have about four to six new ones, one wasn't relevant, one is resolved, two to three are still in progress, and then we still have the carryover from last year that we'll be working with the new city attorney on those.
Okay, did you say four to six or 46?
Four to six.
Okay.
It's still early.
I was going to say, I hope that it's not 46, but.
It's still early.
It is still early, I know.
Okay.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay, thank you. Ambulance Department Quarterly Report. Kathy?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I have the first quarter report for the ambulance service. January, we had 13 no-loads, one ALS transfer and 21 BLS transfers, and 48 medical calls. Of those calls, we were able to do two ALS medicals with that, so for January, we have three total ALS calls. February, we had seven no-loads, nine ALS transfers and 17 BLS transfers, and of those seven, I'm sorry, and, I'm sorry, I don't have my number for the medical calls, but of those medical calls, we had five that paramedics were able to respond to to make them ALS calls. So in February, we had 14 ALS medical calls and transfers together. March, we had 12 no-loads, three ALS transfers, 31 BLS transfers, and, I don't have my total in there, 91 total calls for the month, six of those, we were able to, of the medicals, we were able to have a paramedic respond, so in March, we had nine total ALS paramedic, medicals and transfers together, so that's pretty good. March was a real busy month for us, we had 91 total runs and activities for the month, so that was a real busy month for us. First quarter, we billed out just under $278,000. And then I sent the rundown of the receiving facilities with Sock Center, of course, and St. Cloud hospitals being the predominant receiving hospitals. The majority of our no-loads remains crashes and falls. Special detail, we did CPR for the high school health class in the first quarter for mutual aid, which is responding into another ambulance service, services, primary service area to assist them with calls, we had three, one was a medical for Melrose that was in Albany and we took that patient to St. Cloud, and then we had two medical assists for North Ambulance out of Alec, and those medicals both went to Alimere and Alexandria. We are due for our bi-annual renewal of the ambulance licenses, so I'll be starting that next week probably, they're due by June 30th. And our new rig is projected to arrive in August, and then we did receive a recognition from the Office of the Emergency Medical Services, this is our second year that we've received this recognition for certification of clinical excellence, and that's for providing sound clinical care and proper documentation of that care for the 2024 year, so we're happy to announce that too. Any questions for me?
Questions? Concerns?
I'd just say, first of all, thank, congratulations on that award, my only question is related to the ALS transfers, is it to be understood then that the transfers and the medical calls together in that ALS total, does that represent 100% of the ALS calls?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've been able to respond in the quarter with all?
Yes.
Our paramedics, cool.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to action items, 7A, approved resolution 2025-28, awarding bid for trail project.
So at the March 19th meeting, the city council authorized a solicitation of bids for the 2025 trail project, bids were received until Thursday, April 10th, at which time they were publicly opened, you can see the following, I have the entire list, we had nine bidders, with the low bidder was Ferguson Asphalt of $103,275, the bids went all the way up to $233,532.50, so we had quite a range of bids. So Ferguson Asphalt also is the paving contractor for our 2025 big project at Birch and Pine, so we got really good numbers from them, and so this is under what we had budgeted for that, so that is good news, and we'll see if those same asphalt prices come forward with our reclamation project that's out for bid right now, it could be. So what I'm asking for you tonight is to award that bid as resolution 2025-28, accepting that bid for the 2025 trail bid, trail project to Ferguson Asphalt.
Questions? Concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2025-28?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7B, approve ordinance 845 establishing moratorium on shoreland alteration permits.
So this is due to the ongoing activity both with and without permits along the shore of Sock Lake, the planning commission is recommending that the city council establish a moratorium, moratorium on such work, or issuing a permit for such work until the commission can adequately develop procedures and education materials to ensure that the work is being done in accordance with the shoreline ordinance, there's also the floodplain ordinance that we have to deal with as well. In addition, coordination with other regulatory agencies, including the Department of Natural Resources and the Sock River Watershed will be reviewed, so there's no duplication and to establish which agency is the lead agency and which agency is the supporting agency, so we don't get somebody that goes to the watershed gets a permit for something that maybe we wouldn't have issued or vice versa, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So the moratorium that you have in front of you is a So, the moratorium that you have in front of you is boilerplate, boilerplate moratorium in states, as stated in state statute. It actually says that it is for a year. I don't believe it will take a year to get that done. This is something we'll be doing mi- mostly in-house in coordination with these other agencies. So, if you have any questions on how the moratorium works, I can try to answer those. Otherwise, I'd like you to approve ordinance eight forty-five establishing a moratorium, moratorium on the issuance of shoreline alteration permits in the city of Sock Center.
Questions, concerns?
I got a question, is, um, has there been a significant problem with people on, in the permits? Are they?
We've, we find out about it after the work is done, most of the time. And then they get sent notices that they have to remove it and then that gets appealed and then that becomes a whole another issue. So, we wanna get in front of it. And part of that is education, part of that is getting some information out there so people know what they can and cannot do. And so, we want to establish, you know, exactly how we're gonna process these. I think we have one outstanding valid permit right now, that there'll be some work. Otherwise, there's nothing else that we're aware of that has been started at this point.
So, there's a greater problem today than there has been in prior years?
Uh, we've seen a lot more activity in the last couple of years, yes, on the shore.
Okay, and is it common, I mean, if we don't think it's gonna take a year, do we wanna do a moratorium for a year?
What happens is, as soon as we get it done and you adopt an ordinance, it automatically repeals the moratorium. So, if we get it done in one month or six months or nine months, whatever day that is, it automatically repeals the moratorium.
Right.
It's more difficult to extend it than it is just to have it there and repeal it.
We've had, the planning commission's had five of these in the last year. To where they actually, like, two of them removed the bluff and everything and made it a perfectly beautiful, like, resort-like look. And they didn't have permits, one had a permit. And, uh, most of the time, one of the main things too is, we've got contractors, they have to be licensed to do any shoreline work. You can't just hire any guy that has a backhoe to do it. They have to go through schooling and everything else. And we have the list of that. So, what we're trying to do is get this put together where you will have. You know what you gotta do from step one to step ten or whatever steps it is. And we've had one that went to the watershed and got a permit. Well, the watershed didn't have the authority to give them a permit for that at that point. And they never came back to us and then we got involved. And then the DNR cited them. Well, then the DNR says, well, everything up past the ordinary high watermark is your problem, not ours. So, we gotta get all three things on the same page. So, it makes it easier, you know? And I know it's gonna be some heartburn for some people on the lake that are thinking that they're gonna be, not being able to do anything. But until we get all the, everything in order, the planning commission is requesting this be done. Because it's really hard to sit there and go, he said, she said, with every department and, and now it's come to this. So, that's the reason why the request is coming from the planning commission on this.
Yeah, and I think it needs to be laid out specifically what is authorized. Cause I was in the process of applying for a permit and it's kinda wishy-washy, what you can do or who you do go to. So, I think it needs to be spelled out specifically what you can, you know, when it comes to trees or.
Right.
You know, removing anything on the shoreline. Because right now, it's not real clear and that's the reason why I haven't finished mine yet, so I guess I'll wait a year now, but.
Well, it wouldn't have to be a year, we might have this done in two, three months, so.
It's, it's our goal to have, um, maybe a, like, a one-page brochure that people can have that said, these are the things you can do without a permit. These are the things you can do with a permit. These are the things that maybe you need a conditional use permit as things get more aggressive and there's some things you just can't do. And so, we feel that if we have that information available on the website, we'll probably mail it out all, to all the shoreline owners in Sock Center after we have it prepared. So, that is our goal, but.
That's the education part.
Right.
We send it out.
Typically, the reason for a moratorium is when the word gets out, we start working on that. Everybody runs and gets all their stuff done right away and then we have to go back like we are before with sending them notices to remove. So, it's just much easier to get it done right the first time.
One of the projects was, is the guy was bringing in sand and dumping it in the lake, which was a violation. And then he went out down, down the shore and asked three neighbors, hey, as long as I'm hauling it in, you want some too? And then we ended up with four and it's like, none of it was with permits. So, it's kinda like, okay, wait a minute, we gotta draw the line and say, this is it, until we can tell everybody that this is how this works. And then, we also, at the same time, have fines or whatever else for not having a permit, not having a licensed contractor. Doing this, doing that, it's gonna cost you more money. But, we can't, every project's different, but we need to get the, our ducks in a row, so. Is there any other comments?
I guess, I, I had some questions and I asked them, the Vicki kinda as far as learning a little bit what was happening, why we felt the current standards and processes weren't effective and some of those things. And I got those answered and really it's, um, you know, came down to, most people are just doing the work and not getting the permit. And then, after the fact, I know we, we had two actions where we fined the landholders as a council. And then I know there were some appeals heard at the, at the planning commission that they kinda worked, worked with those landowners on too. Um, so I think getting everybody on the same page from the agencies, DNR, watershed, city, know the process, educate the shoreline owners. And I don't think we're saying we don't wanna work with people, but we just gotta understand the process and know. They need to know what they need to do and we need to know what can and can't be done in the, in the appropriate format. So, if it takes this action to get there, I think that's just the step we need to take.
Okay, any other comments, concerns?
I guess I just had a question about how this extends to the townships, i- if there's, um, and I know, you know, this is specific to city properties. But, does this potentially cause a problem? Uh, I imagine it will because, or it has already, because people drive around the lake and see X, Y, and Z can do this, why can't we?
Yeah, in the townships, they have to go to the county.
Right.
For their permits.
So, are there possibilities that we can adjust some of what we're looking at in that process? It would take, I'm sure, um, changing ordinances, I imagine? Or, what, what would that look like?
Township levels, probably.
So, our shoreline ordinance, DNR develops an ordinance and it goes out to all the jurisdictions and it has them adopted. So, we've adopted the shoreline ordinance, the county has adopted. What's not equal, the same, is like the enforcement and the inspection and the staffing and everything. So, that's why we try, we're trying to coordinate as closely we can as Sterns County, who does in the township. Because you're looking right across the lake at another place, how did they do that when you can't do it here? And we have some unique situations, we have properties that's in conservation easement, which is a whole different story.
Okay.
And then also some of the, that's lower, we have floodplain. And so, there's, there's a lot of moving parts.
Okay, so it's not equal properties as equal ordinances and, and restrictions? It's all case by case, pretty much is what you're saying.
It's the shoreline ordinance, but it has to do with, um, like, in the, in the county, uh, they have different staff and they look at maybe different, different things. They have different, they prioritize different pieces of it more than maybe we do and vice versa. And then the other part with the county is, you know, they've got a lot of, um, septic systems on the lakesides of homes. And that's also an impact when it comes to the shoreline and how they've developed their shoreline, so. And we don't have that issue here, so.
Okay.
We can maybe authorize a little bit more than they can simply because of that. So, but those, we'll lay those all out for people and, and educate even the council and the planning commission in the process.
So, the planning commission's gonna do the review and bring it back to the councils, what you're anticipating?
Right, the planning commission will do their review and their study and then there'll be a public hearing. So, that public hearing, then they'll be, get the public input. And then, once they have an ordinance ready for adoption, then they'll bring that forward.
So, that's one of the things, you know, like Heidi's mentioned, you gotta consider Sock Lake's a big lake. You got two different counties, you've probably got about four or five different townships. Everybody's got their own di- set of rules. You know, DNR's got theirs, but, you know, that's where if you are on, up there by the old golf course and you look to the north. That's a township, county deal. They could be cutting every tree down that's up there if they want to and bulldozing and unless the township catches them or does something. Our side is what we're protecting.
Right.
Well, I can assure you on the north side that, that it's pretty strict.
Well.
Because, um, I've, I've worked with them, but either way, yeah, there's, there is a difference between the, the, uh, the township, Sock Center Township follows the county. And follows it pretty darn close to a T, but, um, and the county has a lot of restrictions.
They do.
They're, they're, which is fine, I guess, I'm just saying, it's, uh, I think there's a balance somewhere.
And that's one of the things the planning commission will look at. You know, maybe there's things that the county's got that we should be putting in with ours.
Yep.
You know, so, we gotta get all the working. Get together and organize it, so.
Right.
Uh, is there any other discussion? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-five?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
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 Opposed, extensions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven C, approve ordinance eight forty-six, amending residential rental license ordinance and resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three, amending the fee schedule.
So, the policy committee met on Wednesday, April second, to discuss potential amendments to the city's residential rental code. To address areas of the code that lack specific procedures and consequences. The committee recommended that a fee be implemented for each day that a code violation is not corrected after due notice. In addition, there's some procedural recommendations included, including updates to the notice letter to be more specific on what is expected and updates to the checklist. All of which are intended to increase transparency. Both that letter and that checklist have already been drafted and they're in use. What we have tonight is the ordinance amending the residential rent, rental code about fees. And so, if you look at the code in front of you, um, we just took out the fees per, part and just reinserted it with the new language is what we did. The parts that are added, I mean, you already had adopted these fees, but they weren't really specific in the ordinance. We have the delinquency penalty of fifty perc- fifteen percent for, uh, when fees are not paid on time. And this is after thirty days. So, you know, you have a time period to pay and then you'll have a, after thirty days, we can assess fifteen percent. We have a reinspection fee to visit the property to inspect corrections follow the failed inspection. So, say you failed your inspection and now I gotta go back for another inspection, so we can do a reinspection fee. A no-show fee for missed appointments, the inspector has an appointment, goes out there, waits around, they never show up. Um, a transfer fee for change of ownership during the year, that was already in place. A complaint inspection fee for a valid complaint, uh, regarding non-compliant rental units. Uh, we've had a few of these, uh, what these are is not, it, these are like usually from the tenant. And we've gotten some from the hospital actually as well. And, um, what that is, is the tenant will call, I've been trying to get my landlord to do this, they can, they won't do it, they won't do it, this is unsafe. And then if we go there and it's, that's a valid complaint. If somebody just doesn't like their neighbor or whatever, that's not a valid complaint. So, we, we don't implement that fee that much, but it is there if a landlord just is non-compliant or won't respond to people. Uh, there's a failure to register fee if you do not register your unit or get your license. Um, I think we have two or three that still have not gotten their very first license after a couple of years. And then, this is the one that they actually talked about the most. A fee for each and every day a unit is non-com- non-compliant after notice of license required or notice of needed repairs. So, if the inspector goes out there and says, okay, you need, you just, all you need done is two more smoke detectors, I'll be back in twenty-four or forty-eight hours. And they, they're not done, and they're not done, and they're not done, and they're not done. And pretty soon, the only way to get them to buy the smoke detectors is have a fee. So, it's twenty-five dollars a day, it's not a great deal, but at least it's something that you take notice. And of course, it's different depending on what is required. If we need an egress window, he might give them thirty days. And, you know, so it just depends on what the issue is. So, really, this just really clarifies how our fee schedule works and puts it into the ordinance. And then there's also the resolution that would amend the fee schedule itself, because we don't put the fees in the ordinance, otherwise you have to amend it every time. So, what we're looking to approve ordinance eight forty-six, amending the residential rental code and resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three, amending the fee schedule.
Questions, concerns?
Uh, I have a one, uh, one question regarding number six, failure to register fee. At what point do we not allow them to rent? I mean, what does the process look like for that?
That's what's already really difficult, cause these people already have renters in their units. And it's, you know, we can't evict them.
Right.
So, we just try to work with them and work with the attorney to try to get it out. And if we're not getting compliance, then we'll, we can assess the fee. Like I said, we have a couple of them yet that just have their heels dug in and they don't want to get their license. But for us to go as far as going to court, it makes it more difficult, cause we're also dealing with a tenant.
So, as of today, we can start charging those non-compliant?
Yes, we can.
Units. Are they the same landlord?
No.
Any other questions, concerns?
So, on number seven, the, uh, the fee for each and every day they're non-compliant after notice of license required or notice of needed repairs. That language, I, I read that, it feels like that's, as soon as they're notified of needed repair, that that could start? I don't know if that language needs to be amended to say if they don't comply with the inspector's, you know, timeframe for the notice? Cause I mean, you give me notice today, hey, you got, gotta fix this and you're gonna start charging me twenty-five dollars. That's the way it would read to me versus like, well, you got thirty days to fix this and if you don't fix it within those thirty days, then we're gonna start charging you at twenty-five dollars. The way I would read this as immediately, as soon as we tell you, you would be subject to that. So, I think that language would need to be amended to say if, you know, something to the effect of if it's not completed at the inspector's.
If you stayed, you got twenty-four hour, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, is eight forty-eight hours.
Well, for, for the small thing, but if they don't do it within the thirty day, like, if the egress window, for example.
We come back and.
Yes, yeah, then after that notice. But the way this reads to me is, it's the, the notice of needed repair, that would be the time you tell me that day that it would start. That's the way that would read to me is my plain, you know, plain language understanding or interpretation.
And one of the things too is if we give them forty-eight hours and then it starts after the forty, you know, we go back, there's a no-show. Then they're gonna get dinged on the no-show thing too.
Well, I guess I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about the double counter, I'm just making sure that.
I'm.
That's understood with the twenty-five dollar fee is understood for the right, right time.
Yeah.
So, so we could add some language, like, at the end of that, if it's not, you know.
If not completed.
If not completed when indicated.
Yeah, with, yeah, inspector's timeline, timeframe to complete or if not completed by completion date of inspector, however that would, would read, I think that.
That makes sense, I can see how, we know what it means, but in the future, someone.
Yeah, someone could interpret it a different way, yep.
Eight hours to put your two smoke detectors back on this day at this time.
And if it's not done, then they get the fee versus like when they're called. Or if it's thirty days for an egress window, cause I mean, some of these repairs aren't just overnight, you know, kinda thing, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And that was the enchant, so.
Yeah, but I'd prefer to be clear.
The enchant, but not the language.
Leave something ambiguous and that can, you know, be, um, abused, so.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-six? And, well, we can keep that separate, fees and the fines.
Can I, one more question before we make a motion regarding language? Because the fee is set for the failure to, uh, register at fifty dollars, is that on a monthly basis? One time? How is that going to be, how's that going to accrue?
We just had that that was a, that was just a, a one time when they, when they finally get the license and they're also gonna assess that. I mean, you can put it differently, we can word it differently if you have a different idea.
So, a failure to register fifty dollars is not very threatening to me if they're going two years without.
But if it's fifty dollars a day.
Well, no, but I mean, if we've, it's a one-time fifty dollars and if they don't do it within the thirty days or whatever, we give them notice to register, then it starts at twenty-five dollars a day thereafter. Right, cause that fee says failure to register.
Cause like, we got two of them out there now that have been milking the system for two years.
Yeah, but now you give them a fifty dollar notice and it's twenty-five dollars a day, so it's seven-hundred-and-fifty bucks a month. That's a, twenty-five bucks a day, you know, after that, if they don't register, and seven-hundred-and-fifty bucks a month, that's a big deal.
Where's the twenty-five dollars a day?
That's your non-compliance.
That's your non-compliance.
So, number seven says, non-compliance after notice of license required or notice of needed repairs, so that covers both of those.
Got you. Got you, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, the, we're talking fee schedule and everything, you wanna do it all in one motion? For both of them?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-six, amending the residential rental license ordinance, and resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, amending the fee schedule, do I have a motion?
I'll move to make that motion with the added language to number seven on ordinance number eight forty-six.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Brad, seconded by Joe, is there any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven D, approve ordinance eight forty-seven, amending one thirteen point seven-two of the city code regarding wine license hours.
So, at the time when they made Sunday liquor legal, uh, the city amended its liquor license ordinance, permitting the on-sale of liquor on Sunday, but we did not do the same for the on-sale wine license. So, in order to allow the sale of wine on Sundays for an on-sale wine license, the city code must be amended to dictate the hours it will be allowed. We have ordinance one thirteen point seventy-two, hours and days of sales of on-sale wine, really what it does is it just takes out the old one thirteen point seven-two, which restricted it on Sunday, and made the hours, uh, say, no sale of wine shall be made between two AM and eight AM during the week, and two AM and ten AM on Sundays. So, basically, when everything closes up at two AM, you can't sell wine again till eight AM during the week, or till ten AM on Sunday. So, that's ordinance eight forty-seven, amending the city code authorizing the on-sale of wine on Sundays.
It's basically a housekeeping deal, changing our language, so it's included, but, is there any questions, or, otherwise, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-seven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi, any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven E, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, approving the application of Jitter's Java Cafe Incorporated liquor license.
So, this is the application for the on-sale wine and on-sale three-two beer license, we do have the appropriate liquor license fees, the insurance liability, and the workers' compensation documents have been received, this transfer date will actually be effective on July first of twenty twenty-five, so it's not right away, but it's coming up quick. And this is for Jitter's Java Cafe. Uh, the one thing to note, that if you get an on-sale wine license and an on-sale three-two beer, because you have on-sale wine, your three-two beer automatically allows you to do strong beer, so people were asking before, was, why was it only three-two? This is the way the license issued, but then that automatically allows strong beer, because they have the wine license. So, what we're looking to is approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, granting the application of Jitter's Java's Cafe Inc. for an on-sale wine license.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad, any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, granting IUP to Ostendorf.
The planning commission at an April eighth meeting conducted a public hearing to consider the request of Abby Ostendorf for interim use permit to utilize a residential property as a short-term rental. The property is located at thirteen oh nine Lake Shu- Lake Shore, Lakeview Drive, in his own R-one residential. The property is not within three hundred feet of another short-term rental, and meets the requirements of the city code, chapter one five six oh nine one. The interim use permit will go into effect concurrent with the issue of a lodging license by Stearns County. I do have resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, granting that interim use permit to Abby Ostendorf, along with all of the findings and conditions, and then how it would automatically expire. This is the same interim use permit that was issued to the other residences in Stock Center that have, uh, short-term rentals. So, we're looking to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, granting that IUP to Abby Ostendorf for a short-term rental at thirteen oh nine Lakeview Drive.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven G, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, accepting quote for ambulance equipment.
So, Stock Center ambulance secured quotes for equipment upgrades to be used for ALS transfers, they include a ventilator and three video scopes, the fund to be utilized are from the EMS aid that the ambulance service received in twenty twenty-four. They had two bids for the ventilator from Hamilton Medical and Zal, uh, the total from Hamilton was twenty-one one oh seven oh seven, and from Zal was twenty-two oh forty-five fifty-two, and then the video of the scopes from Stryker was seven thousand one seventy-seven sixty-six, and GlideScope for eight thousand five hundred and ten. Now, I know the ambulance, uh, service, they, um, prefer the GlideScope, uh, scopes, and I think they have some, uh, some features that the other one doesn't, and they're here to explain that, and, uh, just their request that we approve the GlideScope scopes, rather than the Stryker, even though the bid is a little bit higher. So, if you want, if you have questions about how that works, or what, uh, what is better about that, in their opinion, we can certainly have them come up and explain.
Any questions or concerns? Otherwise, we can have them come up and explain why they would like to go with GlideScope instead of Stryker.
I don't see the dollars for GlideScope, am I missing it?
It was, it was a separate page.
Okay, it's the handle, I'm sorry.
I almost missed it, too.
Yeah, there's a separate sheet.
I think Brian, did you do the, maybe Brian will come up and explain of what, what they feel, uh, that is a better piece of equipment.
Good, Brian Zales with, uh, training officer at the ambulance service. Reason why I prefer the GlideScope is, is multiple reasons. One is, all the five crime mags we have, we use those in our other, our full-time services, because each one of us is full-time employed, so we're familiar with it. The other reasons were, um, the McGrath or the Stryker one, their detachable batteries are not rechargeable, so we have a possible failure point there. The McGrath is, I'm sorry, the GlideScope is, um, rechargeable, so it's always gonna be charged. I'll back up a little bit, the reason why we want the video laryngoscopes, because we have direct, what the laryngoscope is used for is if we have to intubate somebody, so if we have to secure their airway. We have direct laryngoscopy, right, currently, the video laryngoscope improves our success rates immensely. So, that's why we wanna get them. Going back, rechargeable on the GlideScope, then the GlideScope has a larger screen, because I'd like to have, uh, another person witness it, tube going where it's supposed to be. The larger screen helps. Uh, we have more blade options, so different, um, anatomy requires different angles of blades, so we have more blade options with the GlideScope, and for training and review and even legal purposes, we also have, uh, the McGrath, sorry, the GlideScope records it, so if there's any question, if we secure the airway, we'd have a, a video recording of it happening.
Okay. Any other questions, Brian?
There's enough to cover that little bit of extra, right? So, how does the cost goes?
Uh, the difference is like thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, but it's still within the budget?
Yes.
And pretty much the ambulance runs off their own revenues, so.
Well, and this comes from that EMS grant, too, that they had received.
The EMS grant that they got last year.
I just want to make sure, within that grant, I guess.
Is there any other discussion, um, questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one? And please state where you went the ventilator from, and, uh, video.
Motion to approve from Hamilton Medical for the ventilator, and GlideScope for the video laryngoscope.
Okay, yeah, motion by Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi, any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, accepting quotes for miscellaneous building improvements.
Uh, these are the remaining building improvement, uh, repair projects, we just have a couple that are left out there, would be the flooring at City Hall and Police Department. I have listed each of the areas that, uh, we have quotes on, for the arena doors, we have Midwest Lock and Door and Mid-Central Door. Uh, Midwest Lock and Door is the low bid at forty-three nine forty-three eighty-four. For the windows, these are the big windows at the arena, uh, West Central Glass is, or, excuse me, First Rate Glass is the low bid at fifty-four hundred. On the arena locker room showers and floors, they weren't in the initial, when we had our conversations, but with, uh, issues with mold and everything, we did put them in here for consideration. Uh, we have tile in the showers at ten thousand six seventy-six ninety-three, and, uh, rubber floors for eighteen five eighty-nine forty-six, uh, for, these are two that you hadn't really seen before. Uh, the arena rink lighting, we went to look at those, and now we've, after having some discussion on there, uh, really, all we need to do is the LED lamps, and we have a low bid of thirty-six hundred, we don't necessarily have to take that out of this building improvement project, we'll do that probably with our existing arena funds, so that can be scratched. Then we have the makeup uni- unit, a client Schmidt did get theirs in before I actually sent these out, so their low bid was sixteen six seventy-six eighty. And then the rubber roof for, uh, senior center roof, the low bid was Buttweilers at fifty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. So, then, like, like I said, the bids that are still come in are the City Hall floor and the Police Department floor. I think if you look at all these different improvements with these extra ones we add, if we go from the bottom up of things that probably could be struck if the total comes in more than we really want, it would probably be the, the, the upper level flooring here, and then the senior center roof, I think the senior center roof is quite old, but it's not leaking yet, that might be a project down the road a little bit, when we have to do the flat roof at the library on the wings, and then do the senior center as well, so, if you're going to start removing things from the bottom up, that's probably where I would go at this point. Um, not necessarily ready to cut them all loose just yet, till we have all the final numbers in, but for your consideration, but as far as the arena items, I think we're ready to approve those.
Questions, concerns?
With that recommendation of cutting things from the bottom up, you do still recommend keeping the Police Department flooring?
Oh, the Police Department flooring, absolutely, needs it.
So, that's a number we don't know yet.
We have one bid on that right now, and then we have another one, uh, gentleman's coming up from the city, it's actually, that does the state bid, with some recommendations, we just haven't gotten here yet.
How, just curious, how did we not include the arena in the original plan, when it's thirty thousand dollars worth of cost?
The, the locker rooms and the floors?
Yeah.
I think we were, we were just thinking more of the outside, get it sealed up and everything, and then after we started working, it was like, boy, these, these showers and floors are bad, probably worse than we really thought they were.
Now, is this all three locker rooms that are being updated at this cost?
Is that correct, Ben?
California, most.
Yep. It's everything.
Okay.
And I know, so with these numbers, uh, we, you know, as the finance committee, I know we got the, got the totals and stuff, we're looking at, I think, one point one one now. Um, we were planning in the budget to bond for one point two for the, the fund, so we're still within that range, um, for what we were planning to bond, we're just kinda certainly hoping to come in lower, so borrow less and service less debt, um, with that, but, I mean, in that regards, we're still kinda in line with where we're anticipating potentially doing for all of our improvements.
Right, even with the additions of the locker rooms.
Correct, yeah, the locker rooms, the LED lights, and, yeah, the senior center roof, I believe, came in quite a bit over what we had for an estimate, if I remember correctly.
It, it was when we've initially estimated, because when they got up there, it doesn't flow, so they have to build up the floor, it needs more insulation, needs new roof caps, it needs a lot more than just the rubber roof, and that's what made the bid go higher than we thought it was, we estimated.
And that is something that we could put on a five-year plan and get it done, just as long as it doesn't end up getting kicked down the road every time we come to budget.
So, are we wanting to do the rubber roof then, or not? I'm hearing both sides, are we gonna add it in, or are we not wanna add it in?
Again, I mean, like I said, with, with what we had for what we budgeted for, um, for our bond, it would still fit within that, that realm. If we're doing the work, let's get everything up, and we're, we're borrowing now, obviously, you got interest expense for the debt service and higher debt service payment with your things, but.
Yeah.
You know, you punt on it, and five years, it's gonna cost us seventy-five thousand dollars, and that little interest expense wouldn't make any difference, so.
I think if it's within our budget, we should, should do it, I guess that's my whole opinion.
It leaves about fifty to sixty thousand, I think, to cover the expenses of the City Hall and Police Department, which haven't come in yet.
Yeah, I think we had those numbers as far as the estimate of, like, twenty and ten, I believe, was what we're on, though, right, right?
It was twenty for the police, I know that.
And then, like, ten for the upper level here, does that sound right?
And I think that's probably gonna come in more than that, but then, when the bid actually come in, we can make that decision. Um, the bond council's actually gonna be here on the May seventh meeting to talk to you about the funding of all of this, that's why I wanted to get this, these numbers to him.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Okay, yeah, I, you know, if we're from an in-budget, it's kinda silly to kick it down the road, and just do the roof, and I'm, I'm still looking at doing the flooring, Police Department, definitely, and if you take a look at what's upstairs, it's been there for original, and it wasn't laid the proper way in the first place, it was cut out around the file cabins, it wasn't never, it doesn't go underneath them, it's like, whoever did it tried to save some money, and now we're paying for it, but it has been twenty years, too, so. So, I would definitely look at all of that, that whole list, and get this done.
We had thirty-five for the upper mid-level flooring in our estimate for those totals, so.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
You wanna add beam in there, or not, take it out, she said? Or you wanna leave it?
Oh, huh, you mean for the rink lighting?
Lighting.
That was already in the existing arena fund.
Because that's all LED up there now, right? We just got, no?
Over the, over the sheet, it's not.
It's not?
We put new fixtures in, like, eighteen years ago, but that was at the beginning of the LED thing, and LED lights were too expensive back then.
Okay.
It's so much different, was it, were they, did it bid the same way? I mean, you got such a huge variance from the low to the other two.
Well, one's lamps only, but.
Even the lamps only, that between the two beds was crazy different.
When I'm looking at it, two is on the lamps only, we'd be able to, if we go with the LED lamps, there might be a rebate coming from the PUC.
There, there is, there's a rebate.
That'll cover that, or some of it, so, so there's rebates for everything out there for electric, um, so what's the council's wishes? I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept the low bids for all of the areas that we discussed, excluding arena rink lighting, but including the bids as they come in for City Hall and Police Department flooring.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Any questions on the motion? Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven I, agreement with ISD seven forty-three for summer rec.
So, Grant Leeser, the, the community ed director at the school, requested the city extend its prior agreement to contribute funds for summer rec. The agreement to contribute nine thousand per year expired in twenty twenty-three, uh, he had initially requested the agreement be extended to twenty-four, five, and six. Uh, we had initially budgeted in twenty-four, however, those funds were allocated toward the contribution for refurbishing the tennis court for pickleball, and then we did not budget in twenty-five. Uh, the park, the park board discussed the request and set it aside pending the outcome of the trail project bids, which have now come in, that could be a potential source of twenty-two funding if you want to. The board also discussed a possible smaller contribution due to the baseball no longer being offered by the school, which was one of the three programs the city initially sponsored, which was swimming, baseball, and softball. If the council does not wanna contribute directly to the program, there's the option of setting up a grant system to pay for, the fees for students who would not be able to participate, so I gave you, like, five different options here. The first one is to approve, uh, extend the prior agreement for twenty-five, six, and seven, uh, then the, we also talked about a lesser amount at the park board, so that the option would be like six thousand, that would be two programs instead of three, or to budget in twenty-six and go forward from there, and do nothing in twenty-five, or to set up the grant program or non-renewal, so you kinda have some options there, I gave So you kinda have some options there I gave you to select from.
Comments, discussion?
Where are we at with the, um, the bids that came in, what was budgeted for the trail?
So we, we budgeted for the trail, and then what the trail bid came in at, uh, we have, the bid came in at one hundred and three thousand. We actually had a hundred and seventy total in that fund. Some of that's been used for other things, but there would be adequate dollars in there to transfer into this if you chose to.
So that is one of the things that we did talk about at the park board meeting, that if there were funds available to fund it this year, and then put it in the budget for twenty-six to twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Or twenty-seven, yes.
I had, you know, I, and I was agree with what Scott said. I attended that park board meeting to see where this was going. Because, uh, he comes through, you know, I don't have anything against the guy that's taking care of the paperwork, but when you're the one that's bringing the contract in every three years, and then all of a sudden you forget to, and then you come in after the fact and ask for nine grand for twenty-four, and it's already long gone, and then you want nine grand for twenty-five, and it was never budgeted, to me, it was like, really? Is that how administration does things? I don't know. To me, it wouldn't cut it around here. Um, the park board did say that they would, from what I understood, would start budgeting twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and if they could give them a token fee for twenty-five, they would go along with it. But that had to come based on the bids, so. That's the recommendation from the park board, if I've explained that right, Scott?
Yep, yep.
So I would almost go with what they recommend.
I don't quite understand your token fee or your, what do you wanna do for twenty-twenty-five? I understand twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, but you just wanna pick a number for twenty-five since we already know it's, it's within the budget?
Yeah, we've done nine thousand in the past, and if that's what we continue in the future, I mean, if the money's there, nothing's really, the numbers in summer rec have actually been going up each year, and last year they didn't have swimming lessons, so that cut a lot of the cost out and stuff, and they didn't have actually anything for that, but it was the park board's recommendation that we do continue with it, and if we're able to do the nine thousand, you know, because we didn't have the numbers at the time, that, that's kinda was the consensus.
Gotcha.
So, I mean, if we're looking at that, I mean, we're mentioning twenty-eight, but this says approving the renewal for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, which means we're, we're taking the non-budgeted nine thousand for this year, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'd budget nine thousand, twenty-eight, we review.
Right.
If we're gonna do it again, if we're gonna renew it into twenty-twenty-eight.
Yeah, cuz we're doing three-year.
This year counts as that three-year, part of that three-year renewal, so we're not worrying about twenty-twenty-eight.
Correct.
One of the things that, that wasn't really diswell, it was asked, um, at the park board meeting was, the main contract was, we get a report on who, you know, how much, how many people are doing it, and for each sport or whatever, and, and also, we need to ask for a financial, which, okay, at the park board meetings, the first time anybody's ever seen a report for the last three years on participation, and we never did see a financial. They kinda walked around it. So it's like, okay, are we gonna require this now? Are we gonna give them nine grand? And then just say, yeah, it goes into the summer rec general fund, and we're not gonna ask what you use it for, or are we gonna require a report? Because that's the way it was originally set up.
Well, and you also have change in who's in charge and some of those things, and if, you know, we're not asking or, or, you know, requiring it when they come to the table and stuff, I mean, it kinda goes both ways. One, communication as it, as it comes along, and two, I mean, if you have officers changing or not aware of way, way it's done, they're just like, they just kinda do what works best, and, you know, if there's a problem, someone will tell me eventually. So, I mean, I think, think now.
Took them two years to bring it to us.
Well, now we know, and now we ask for it, now they know, cuz maybe, maybe Brent didn't know that.
Yeah, he was the one that brought us it before.
Wow, I mean, I imagine this has been, been in case for a long time, so.
All of that, so.
So I think, yeah.
Not to all of a sudden drop the ball and then say, please, you know, I don't work that way, but.
Well, I, I, again, you know, now they know what we, the expectation is, and so it'll come to the table as long as we're asking for, hey, we need this provided, and we won't, you know, cut the check until we receive that, you know, we've budgeted it, but doesn't mean we have to release it unconditioned.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's something we cross with that. I think, think, you know, fact that we've done it for a number of years, certainly it's a benefit to the youth of our community to, to collaborate with the school district on these offerings. Gives, you know, we wanna be a, a family-friendly, uh, child-friendly community, so there's benefits to providing those funds. Obviously, we got it in the budget. We had budgeted it last year and, and stuff too, so, um, I'd have no concerns with, with, um, providing this.
Okay, I don't know if everybody knows the history of how the city ever got involved in paying part of this, but I'll let you know. It's, uh, the city always ran a summer rec program, and we were doing the hiring of all the kids. And pretty soon, it was like, we don't know whether or not that person that we hired is an upstanding student, or if he's just there to have free time. So we asked the school to take it over. The school took it over as long as we would help them fund it to a certain extent, and that's how we started in this. At that point when it happened, it was never supposed to be something that went on forever and ever, I mean. It's, it was supposed to have some time, but it was sunset, when their financials showed us that they could do it without our support. Well, those financials never got brought to us over how many years, so now it's kinda just a foregone conclusion that the city's gonna continuously give money to the school for the summer rec. So I don't have a problem with giving it to them. I just need more accountability.
So your, your suggestion, I'm just listening and trying to reiterate what this, this direction this conversation is going in, would be number one, basically, approve nine thousand per year for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. With the conditions that financials are provided each year, or the contract becomes null and void?
Cuz see, years ago, it was only supposed to be three sports that we were gonna fund. Well, now baseball's out of the picture, but they got two pages of nothing but stuff that's, they're doing.
It's a strong program, I think.
It's a strong program, yes, but, you know, I still like to know, cuz they used to bring us a report that told us, oh, we spent this much money on bats, we spent this much money on this. This is how we did, which according to the contract it was. Now it's just a nine thousand dollar check, and they don't have to account for anything they use it for. That's the part.
I can see, I can see the frustration in that, because I know with my kids being in multiple summer rec programs over the last few years, I'm trying to think of what programs or which sports they were in that actually would have cost money for equipment if we didn't provide it, and there isn't many besides what you just mentioned.
Yeah.
It's, it's not just equipment, it's coaches, it's a, it's a share of the summer rec wages.
And that would take up the majority, I imagine, for a lot of these.
Mm-hmm. But anyway, that's the history of how that worked, and how we and the city got involved in the school thing, because we handed it to them, so. If there's no more discussion, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the nine thousand per year for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and to work, uh, with the city to get financials annually.
And I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Brad, second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven, J, approve advancement of EMTs.
Uh, Amuse Director Kathy Stroop submitted the following request for EMT advancements. Nick Welly will go to paramedic level three on four twenty-one, twenty-five, and Harry Dunn to EMT B one on four sixteen, twenty-five. And we're just looking to approve the advancements as requested.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the advancements?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven, K, approve resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-three, ordering improvement for twenty-two-five reclamation project.
So this action is, to answer it with the public hearing we had earlier, to consider the improvement of Park Lane, Parkview Drive, and Part Hendrix by full-depth reclamation. If the council wishes to proceed with the project as proposed, it should adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-three, ordering the improvement. Then the next step after ordering the improvement will consider bids for the project, which is right now scheduled for May seventh, the twenty-two-five city council meeting. So we're looking to is approve resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-four, ordering the improvement.
Questions, concerns? We had the public hearing. Seen the results of that. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-four?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Any other last-minute discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, oh, yes, unfinished business, twenty-two-five Birch and Pine Project update. Keith?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I feel like I'm a little close here. Um, the project's off and running, as I'm sure you've probably driven by and, and see it, uh, see it in progress as we've gone. Uh, the pre-construction meeting was actually on Monday, the seventh. Uh, actually, some of the tree removals got started late the week before, actually, for that. Most of last week was also some remainder of the tree removals on the project. This week, uh, street reclamation was started, so some of that has been done. If you've driven through there, it's been done already. Some of the removals of curb and gutter, sidewalk, those kinds of things are being removed. Um, temporary water systems are being installed as we speak, um, so they're getting ready for the underground, which is slated to start next week, Monday or Tuesday of next week. We'll start with the underground work there, and things are, are going well so far. Um, uh, there's several phases to the project. As I mentioned before, the contractor plans to take the entire project in one year. Um, so the new phasing, we've talked about phase one, phase two in the past, but the new phasing that, that they plan to do is in three phases. I, I like to split the first one kinda in two phases, uh, two subgroups, if you will. Phase one A, if you will, is really from Fifth Street, from Ash to Birch, and then south on Birch to Ninth, and then Ninth Street. So that's kinda where all the utilities, things will be done on First, so one A. One B is, moves a little bit to the west, and that is basically Seventh Street and Pine Street, south of, south of Seventh Street. Phase two then, basically, is Eighth Street from one end to the other. And then phase three is pretty much everything else, which is kinda the north end of the project. So that's the intended phasing as we move through that project. Um, it allows mainly Center Point Gas is gonna be doing a number of relocations through there, and we have it coordinated such that they will be right in front of us and moving to different places that the underground contractor is not, so, uh, it allows us to be some coordination. So even in some of those other areas, there will be some work going on, but there'll be those small utility relocation type stuff happening. Uh, so that's what's intended for there. Uh, one of the issues that's, uh, that's come up as a concern is it relates to existing utility services that are actually going across other people's properties. Um, there are several of them on the project, uh, four of them, to be exact, to be exact, that we know of at this point in time. Uh, one of them's actually, the parcel itself is not on the project, it's actually on Fourth Street, but its existing water service comes off of Pine Street, goes under through somebody else's yard, and comes into their parcel on, on Fourth Street. Now, these things have been in for a long, long time. Um, we've seen these before, a few other areas of town. Um, the one on, that I'm talking to now on Fourth Street, um, there is a new water service that was installed for that parcel with the Fourth Street project, but at this stage, it's never been connected to. Um, so there lies a question as to, do we hook up the existing one, which is going through somebody else's property, or do we require them to, to connect up? Um, the others are, there's two on Seventh Street, three-eleven and three-fifteen Seventh Street, uh, which basically go through, one of them comes from Pine Street, and one of them comes from Birch Street, and they come through other people's side yards and into the back of those particular parcels. Um, and those have been in there for years and years and years. Um, but once again, we have, with the project, we have new services that are in the front, as we normally would, coming off the street to them. Um, those particular, uh, people, as far as I understand, at this way, at this point, have expressed interest in connecting to the new ones. Um, but we'll see where that, you know, that's something we need to discuss. The other one, the, that we know at this point is on Ninth Street, two-sixteenth Ninth Street, which actually comes off of Birch Street and comes through somebody's side yard and comes to the back of their property on Ninth Street. So we have four of these parcels that are out there that we're aware of at this point in time. There may be one or two more that we come across as we go through here. We just don't know. It's so old, and the records are sketchy on some of them at this point. But I know that at, uh, this was brought up as a concern from the public utility staff. Uh, my understanding, as this was discussed at the, uh, utility commission, maybe Warren can point to this, at the, at Monday evening's, uh, commission meeting, and there was a directive, please correct me if I'm wrong, Warren, that, um, this was directed that the, that these folks need to connect to the existing, uh, uh, to the existing, to the new services that are being put in place. The question is, I don't know at this point, and Warren, please fill in any details, as it relates to if there was any timeline set as to when do they have to connect to these, because we do have issues, is just from a construction standpoint, is they'll be on temporary water, so their water is kinda taken care of. But when we come by with sewer, we have to connect them up to sewer because they won't have new sewer. We'll have to connect the existing sewer. It's a timing issue, and even with the water, by the time we come through with and remove, by, as soon as we put their new water services in, that's when we'll start removing the temporary water, which doesn't leave a very large window of opportunity to do that construction, where the homeowner would have to get a plumber in, dig those things in, uh, especially on the sewer side, how that's going to impact finished basements or whatever they have down there to make those connections. Uh, so there is some timing issues with some of these things, um, which we may have to connect them up to their existing services. But then what happens from there? Do they get a timeline? Do they get something? And Warren, please chime in if there's specifics that the, um, that the, uh, commission brought out as to how that's gonna take place. But as you can see, that's sort of the devil's in the details of how do we do this? And, and in terms of jurisdiction, I believe this is all the public utilities as to how to get this done from probably a poli- policy standpoint, but, um, but I wanted to make the council at least aware of it, and perhaps support or whatever is the appropriate term for the committee, the commission to take care of these situations, cuz there isn't, my understanding, there isn't a policy that addresses this type of thing um, for any situation that we run across in the, in the future. Um, and we have had issues where we have connected existing services that have gone through people's backyards as, as, as early as I recall in the Ash Street project. So different leadership, different folks have different ideas of what should be done, and the question is, what do we want from a utility, from a city perspective on this kind of thing? So I wanted to bring that up to you to at least get some feedback from you that perhaps we can bring back to the, to the commission, or, or whatever is the appropriate. So I'll, I'll let Warren maybe chime in if there's some things he wants to say.
On Monday night, the commission went and discussed it in length, and our policy, or the commission's policy, is anytime a new line water sewer comes within, by your property, you're required to hook up to it at a ninety-degree angle. And none of this going through backyard stuff is going to be allowed, that's policy. The only thing is, like other things, in personal opinion, there was a policy that was on the books, but nobody ever enforced it. Because there was a lot of opinion, well, so and so can't afford that, so and so can't afford that, so we don't make them hook up. We've looked back at the Fourth Street project, the one project, they paid for the assessment for the water, but they never hooked up. The sewer, we're pretty sure they must have hooked up, but they didn't get assessed for it. But that might be because they put in a new line already from the house out to the street before the project, so they might have got credit. We're not totally certain on it, but.
Or we might find a sewer service that nobody, nobody knew about.
Right, it might be one of them. Question was, is okay if we're not going to make them hook up in front of their house? And we're going to let them do the, use that water line that's coming off of Birch Street through that person's backyard? Who's going to pay for that extra service? Is the city going to pick that up? My opinion is, I told the commission, no. You're going to allow them to have a service not being used? My opinion, it was, no. The water and light will pay for any extra service. If you're not going to follow your own policy, then this is how it works. That didn't go well, but they understood where it came from. Because I said, if we got four of them, we got four hookups, and it's two thousand dollars for a hookup? That's eight thousand dollars, the, the commission's going to have to come up with the money on. If you're going to allow them to keep using lines that are going through someone else's property.
But we also have to keep.
That's basically where we ended it. And it was kind of like, between Tim and you and Glenn, we're going to discuss with the property owners their options and we were going to go from there.
The details, we have, we have services go through people's backyards. Some of them probably don't even know that somebody's service goes through their yard. So it becomes, you know, a sale issue, a legal issue between at least private property owners sometime in the future. If the city via, I'll just say city, allowed it, whether it's PUC or city, passed, that could, you know, city could get drug into those things. Who knows, but you know, it's certainly not a situation that would be ideal. And, and the costs, depending on, I don't know some of the, you know, these folks, what they have in their basement, or their finished basements. Obviously, it becomes a much more expensive to tear up whatever flooring, all sorts of things, to run new sewer services that might have to go across the house to connect into where it is now. So there's, you know, there's a lot of issues. And the gray area even with the, you must connect is, I think that was generally geared towards a new sewer and water line going in front of your house versus, they already have sewer and water going for their house, they just aren't connected to it. They were connected some years before from, from some, from some side street. So it seems like at least the policy probably could use some, some tweaking to probably make it a little more specific. But, you know, the question is, how do we move forward? And as I said, it's probably a utility issue, but I don't know where the council's input in that is. But we need, you know, it'd be helpful to probably have at least some support or guidance as to what you think is the right way to go so that they can take that and.
And this isn't, this isn't the first time this has come up. When we did Ash Street, we found a sewer line that went through three different houses, they were all hooked together. And then after it was all said and done, the sewer line failed, and one of the houses filled up with two of the neighbors sewage. And then right away, they all looking at us, well, why didn't you make them hook up, why didn't you do this? Wait a minute. So this isn't the first go around on having this spaghetti lines going everywhere that people felt like doing it. And we know that if we ever get up to Getty Street, it's going to be the same thing because we got a few of them up there, so.
And also, to make matters worse, there's at least one, I can think of, not a couple, that likely the service is likely goes underneath a structure, somebody else's structure. Which is in. Drive, or garages in this case, not the home, but goes underneath someone's garage.
Right.
To go back to another parcel. And, and, you know, to be fair, these things have been in for years and years, but we, we have issues.
So these are the water and sewer services for all four, or?
Water and, well, the one, the first one I mentioned is just water that we're aware of.
No, we don't know where the sewer is.
That's the fourth and pine one's just the water.
The other three are sewer and water.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's crossing other property, I'm assuming there's no recorded easements to have anything crossing anybody's properties?
We don't know for sure, but my strong suspicion would be no.
And I talked.
Likely, if there's sales, people, there's probably no disclosures, nobody knows anything.
Well, I'm sure, all the homeownership changes over the years, I mean, people don't know where their stuff goes, they just know it, it works.
Well, the one that did pay for the water service, that, that home has been changed hands. It's, it's a different owner now.
Yeah.
That property paid for the hookup, but they never did it.
Doesn't it, doesn't it seem like this is a PUC issue? I mean.
It's not the same, Brent.
It's water, sewer, it's a utility. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, the city's doing the project, but at the end of the day, I mean, we're, my opinion, we're going to provide them a service, and it would be the PUC's responsibility to get them hooked up, or make them hook up. I mean, we, we have a, we have an obligation to get them a, a water and sewer service from the main, right? And then I think if the PUC, I mean, they got to follow their policy. If it's a requirement to hook up, they got to work with that property owner and get them to hook up, one way or another, whether it's a timeline or.
Basically, that's what came out of the meeting. There was a few that didn't like it.
If nothing else, we wanted to make sure you were aware of it. I believe from your, the autonomy that they have, I think it's, I think it's their responsibility, you know, to, to correct whatever deficiencies in, in the policies and moving forward, and how to deal with these situations as we move forward. But we certainly wanted at least to get your opinions, and at least to get you to, to express, you know, what you think needs to be done so we can go back and have those discussions.
Right.
I am in agreement with Brad that I think it feels a little, I mean, I like the way you put it, autonomy. I, I trust them to make the right decision with what needs to be done, considering they own this portion of the project. So let them own it, let them make those decisions, we'll take care of the rest.
And from what I understand, the way the meeting went, that's basically where the direction we were going. But at least now we're transparent and everyone here knows. So if someone else down the street's going, what are you making them hook up to something they never, they don't need? Because we're not, you know, somebody's going to, if we're going to put that extra service in, someone's paying for it. And not the people on the project, because they're already paying for their own. So.
An unhappy resident calls may very well wind up, end up with you. So at least you're, you're aware of what's, what the issues are.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, well, I will, Vicki and I will bring that back, we'll have discussions and figure out how we move forward with these, you know, from a, from a project perspective then. So any other questions you might have for me?
Okay, no, I guess not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. New business, set budget meeting and roundtable meeting dates with SOC Center Ambassador class.
So Stacy Michaels, she has the Ambassador class, you guys met with them last year. She's requesting that the city set the date for its budget workshop in August, and its date for the final budget hearing in December, and a date for a roundtable discussion with the city council. This would be for when their, their students come to us. So the budget workshop that she's requesting a date is usually, we do it in August or September, so you need to have a date to pick for that. And then the budget hearing is typically the first Wednesday in December, so that would be a regular city council meeting. If you want to meet ahead of that in a roundtable, you know, we could do that, or unless there's something, some other way. I'm bringing these dates up to you because I know you all have different schedules, I don't know if you know what your schedule is, looks like in August yet. Generally, we don't set that meeting until July, so, but that is her request, that we set these dates now so she can let her students know, or the people that are going to sign up for the class. I guess these are, is to put in the, in the class signup information so they know what dates they need to attend meetings.
Comments?
Budget workshop would be full council or just finance committee?
No, this is the full council where, the department has each come in and address the council on what their requests are.
Not the roundtable?
The roundtable was when you sat in the audience with them.
Okay, thank you for reminding.
The one, I'm going to jump in on this. First, you know, we hand the budgets to all the department heads, they got so long to bring it to us. Then we have to review, the finance committee will review it, and then it comes to us to go back meet with the department heads. That's a long reach to be going that far and trying to adjust every department head's schedule, and our schedules, and staff time. I, I think they, they can sit and wait. They can come to a public meeting and find out when we set that date. They don't need, it's April. We're talking meeting in August for something we've never actually done.
Well, you got students who, if they're going to join the class, may have conflicts as it relates to, you know, state fair participations, practice schedules, things like that. And I, obviously, you know, we're not going to have this meeting at two o'clock in the afternoon to accommodate somebody who's practicing at, at five, which I don't think that time of year they do anyways because of teacher workshops and starting those things. But, I mean, that last week of August is traditionally when we've held it. And honestly, I mean, in my six years of, of these meetings being on the council, I think it's always been that Wednesday of that week. So, I mean, Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, is really not that much of a stretch to just pick that date and say, that's where we'll go with. I mean, budget heads usually have their stuff together and stuff well in advance there. I think last year, we met a, a week before that, has the finance committee to, to cut and ask them to adjust and some of those things. So again, you pick a, pick that last week of August, I don't know that it's going to be a huge leap for us not to be meeting at that point anyways because we then meet at the council that first Wednesday in September to set and adopt our preliminary levy.
And, and we have done it that Wednesday, and then we've also done it the second Wednesday of September. So depending on whichever one, whoever the most of you could attend, so.
And that's where I'll just pop in, I am out of state the last week of August, so.
And one of the, you know.
Just.
I've, I've met, it's a wedding, I can't.
I understand where you said, Joey, well, they might have conflicts. Well, look at all the working parts that are sitting here, they could have conflicts too. But we're supposed to overlook that for, like, this time was three people.
I think it's a, a matter of curriculum. You know, Stacy puts a lot of work into these students who want to participate, and she builds a strong curriculum for them leading up to the school year. And that, that there's some summer work before school even starts, and that's kind of how this started last year, the intent was.
Right.
I think those students got a lot out of what we did with them, even though it kind of started with a little bit of hiccup. I think it's valuable.
I've never seen a report, though, telling us, or have them come to us, telling us that they got anything out of it.
They're in their first year of the class, so they probably still haven't wrapped that up as far as the value.
Well, yeah.
I don't want to poo-poo something that only just started without seeing, you know, the success of it. This is just coming, you know, from somebody with, with kids still in school and, and maybe going to participate in this themselves. I'm willing to put in that effort, but like Joe said, keep it on a regular schedule and let them, you know, work with us.
You're never going to please everybody.
No.
Everybody's schedules are different, and if, the further out we are, I think the better off we are because that way, if something comes up in July or June, oh, no, I'm not going to be here because I had this come up. I'm one that likes to plan out in advance, and if I know six months in advance, I'm better. Put it on the calendar, and it's, on the calendar, it's set in stone. And if one of the department heads can't make it, well, then they can send somebody in their place to give their, their portion of it, because you're never going to please a hundred percent of the department heads, the council, it's impossible.
We've never had any issue.
It seems to me like we're really looking at two days, either the twenty-seventh or September tenth, right?
I've worked the tenth.
But we've done forever, for, I mean, for a long time.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, I would agree, if we can set it, everybody knows, what difference does it make? We're good to go.
Yeah. I'm okay with the tenth if no one has any other conflict with that date, but no, that the twenty-seventh, I'm out.
Wednesdays are probably the best.
Yeah, Wednesdays would be the best with youth sports schedules and season starting there, I know. I don't know what my son's football schedule will be, but that's going to take precedent over budget meeting.
And they're knocking out a game on a Wednesday.
That's why I said Wednesdays were best.
Yep, they do. And for me as well.
So typically, we set that budget meeting earlier than six thirty, we'll start at four thirty or five?
I'd say five.
Five, five?
Yeah.
So then is the roundtable on December third at five fifteen work for everybody then? That's ahead of a regular meeting?
Yep.
And then the other one is the regular meeting?
Okay, so we're doing.
Is it September tenth we're going with?
September tenth.
Yep, make it work for Heidi.
Yep.
Okay. General consensus then?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's at five P M.
Five o'clock, yep. Okay, and we will move on to consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, I've got an updated one here, so. Schedule of claims, uppaid claims of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-nine cents. We removed one bill for two ninety-five thirty-five, that's why the number is different. So for a total of fifty-four thousand, seven fifty thirty-nine. March checks, paid claims payroll of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. We have a request from Scott Kowski, representing American Legion Post sixty-seven, for an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Beer Garden during Sinclair Lewis Days in the Sinclair Lewis Park on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. The fee and certificate of insurance is, is provided. Also, a request from the American Legion Post sixty-seven, submitted an application and permit for a four-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the Stearns County Fair from August sixth through ninth, twenty twenty-five. The fee and certificate of insurance is, are being provided. We have a request from the American Legion Post sixty-seven to submitted an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the Stearns County Fair for August tenth, twenty twenty-five. Fee and certificate of insurance are being provided. Also, a request from the American Legion Post sixty-seven for an application and permit for a two-day temporary on-sale liquor license at the Stearns County Fairgrounds for August twenty-second and twenty-third of twenty twenty-five. Same fee and certificate of insurance are being provided. And a request from the American Legion Post sixty-seven for one temporary extension, one-day temporary extension of outdoor liquor permits for the term of one day on October fourth, twenty twenty-five, for a five K run in their north parking lot from noon to ten P M. They also would like permission to block off Park Road from the boat landing to Main Street. Is there any questions or concerns about those requests or the schedule of claims? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Separate them, so Scott doesn't.
No, he doesn't want to, he's just going to.
Excuse me, good, okay.
I already talked. Do I have a motion to approve their requests and the schedule of claims?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Any last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. That brings us, oh, we got an informational item.
Just got a couple of information items, we have the citywide cleanup day, that's May seventh from ten, it's actually till two o'clock, I have five o'clock written on there. But the household hazardous, hazardous waste is that same day at the arena, and they go ten to five. So we have the citywide clean. So we have the citywide cleanup, which is ten to two, and the hazardous waste, which is ten to five on May fifth, or May seventh, at the Civic Arena.
Questions about those two items? Okay, this brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.